We'll get called to order here. It is March 23rd, 5:31 PM. This is our work session meeting and we'll call the roll to make sure that we have a quorum. I know Mr. McKim may be joining us a little bit later. He does have a schedule conflict with a very weighty agenda tonight with the Plan Commission. And he'll be there working through that should be a very long meeting, I would imagine over there. But Mr. McKim will try to join us here if he's able to. So we'll call the roll for all the council members present currently. Mr. Decker.
Here.
Ms. Hawke.
Here.
Mr. Iverson.
Here.
Ms. Munson.
Here.
Ms. Wilts.
Here.
Mr. McKim. And as I mentioned, Mr. McKim is at another meeting currently, but we do have a quorum. So we'll go ahead and move forward with our agenda. And now we will have the adoption of the agenda. But I do want to call to everybody's attention, if you look at item three, we have two item threes on our agenda tonight and they're both closely related, but that's Scrivener's error. And so what I'd like to propose is that the first item three, department updates will be item three A. And the second item three on our agenda, an update on refurbishing of the Nat U Hill Room will be item three B. And then we'll move to item four in numeric order going forward after that. If there's no objections, we will adopt the agenda. Is there any changes, modifications or edits that anyone would like to see reflected in the agenda before we approve it? All right, I see no objection. So we'll move forward with our agenda. And next up will be department updates. And if we have departments who are here, this is usually our time where we hear our revenue report from Ms. Gregory with the Auditor's Office, Financial Director. It looks like she has entered the virtual meeting. Hello, Ms. Gregory.
Hi, sorry about that reconnecting. Good afternoon, everyone. I have a few things to go over with you. Thanks for having me. First, I provided the revenue report last week Friday, so you should have all received that in your email. Included with that report, I also provided a council supplemental report on our cares and COVID expenses. You know, the COVID expenses that we were able to get reimbursed through cares. So that was 2020 to present. I can pull that up and share my screen if you'd like to see it. It was, let me see if I can do that here. Um, one second. Ah. Think I got it. Okay. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Good deal. Okay, so I separated it a year. So let me see if I can scroll up here. So you'll see here at the top, it says it's 2020 information. So this is where all the cares expenses were or where we received cares money in. So you can see that this includes general fund rainy day, food and beverage, and then a couple of the actual cares funds themselves. So the expenses for 2020 are totaled there, 1,405,987.78. And then if you scroll down further, the 2021 expenses through, I believe I did it through the 18th. Yes. So you have those expenses state and then a grand total of 1,989,302, $347.07. So I can always add to this if you'd like to see more detail. You know, happy to do whatever would be beneficial. Um, also I received good news from FEMA. Our review is complete. They approved reimbursement for $44,721.48 in our completed work. So this is now, we're going to be working now with the Department of Homeland Security. They are able to release those funds. I spoke with someone today. They said to expect them in about 35 days. We still have a huge section of work to be completed, over $400,000 that was approved by FEMA. So if we go, you know, much over that, then we'll have to go through another series of reviews, all the layers they do. But otherwise, we can stay with the Department of Homeland Security. And we think, we think we estimated pretty accurately for the expenses that we are able to claim through FEMA. So hopefully. I'm sorry?
Nothing.
Okay. And so hopefully we will able, we will be able to continue with that. We have another packet to provide to the Department of Homeland Security, so they will review. And then if approved, they will release those funds as well. So I'll keep you updated on that. But good news that we finally got approval for the initial release of funds. Um, yes. Also, I'm working on a comparison report on revenue 2019 through present, just so we can kind of use that for the new American Rescue Plan Act to kind of planning purposes. You'll be, I hope to have that to you by the end of the week. So I'm working on that now in between other things. So happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Let's check with council and see if there's any questions for you. Would anybody like to get started? Yes, Mr. Iverson?
Bree, the reports just keep getting better and better. We really appreciate all the hard work you're doing. And I mean that with the utmost sincerity. This is just fantastic. Is there a way for the public to see this? I know public can come back and watch this, this recording or attend these meetings and see this. But is this posted on our website anywhere?
It is not. I am happy to work with TSD and do so. Maybe we can put this under the council page if that would be helpful.
That's fine. As long as it's somewhere that's easily accessible by the public.
Absolutely. I'll work on.
I'll work with Bree and we'll get that to the council website.
Yeah, that'd be great. I think, you know, we can just have kind of a listing each month of these reports. And that would be really helpful.
We do the same with food and beverage. So it'd be nice to do that with the way that we're responding to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Absolutely. Kim and I will work together and take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Yes, Ms. Hawke.
Yes. Will there be included a list of all the recipients? Because I think that's what the public is interested in. Not just major categories, but where, where does food bank support? Where does, you know, all these different categories? I think the public would be interested to see a link somehow where they could go and take a look at all the different recipients. It's not a secret, right?
No.
Not at all. And I can easily include that. I'll just add the detail to this report maybe on a second tab. So those that want the concise report have it and those that want the detail can see it as well.
Right. Thank you.
Oh, that'd be great.
Very good. Any other questions, comments?
I will make a statement that I do know that we will not be able to put an Excel spreadsheet on the website. So we may have to come up with a modified version of the report because everything has to be in a PDF format.
Okay. Well, hopefully TSD can work with us on that too and get it formatted appropriately. And we can get that on there on the website. That'll be great. Thank you so much.
Do you also want the revenue reports on the website?
I think, yeah, I think the more, the more the better in terms of transparency.
Sure.
It's not a secret.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we just, what, what I think the, the challenge will be for us is to make sure that we have it organized in such a way that is coherent to, to people that are looking to access it and that it's, you know, easily accessible and it all kind of makes sense on how it's laid out there. But I know that the Auditor's Office and our council staff and TSD can come up with a great solution for us. So that'll be great.
Great.
All right. Well, any other questions or comments for Ms. Gregory? Before we move on to our next department update? I know you all must be gearing up for all of this American Rescue Plan developments coming our way. Do you anticipate that that will require a significant amount of staff time?
Um, it's really exciting. I mean, that's a lot of money coming our way. But um, yes, I mean, we have a, you know, we've had a little practice with the, you know, the smaller cares program. So I, I think we're in good shape to handle this. We have a great staff and you know, if obviously you have a wonderful council office as well. So between Auditor's Office and Council, I think we'll be able to take care of it well.
Yeah. Well, that's great. And I, I do know that we have slated for our April work session, a discussion with the commissioners and we'll be continuing those discussions quarterly, just to kind of touch base council and commissioners on things. And I think that as we learned of these new developments here recently, that will certainly be a big topic of discussion for us. So it would probably be good for us, Ms. Shell, to get the Auditor's Office involved as well too, to see if they can join us for those discussions. That'll be really helpful.
That'd be great.
All right. Anything further from council for Ms. Gregory? All right. Well, have a good evening, Ms. Gregory. Thank you for joining us and we'll see you next time. Okay?
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Too. All right. And up next is Ms. Purdy with the Commissioner's Office. She gives us a regular update on cares funding. I don't know that we've had a whole lot of new developments there, but we'll check in with Ms. Purdy just for good measure. Ms. Purdy, are you available?
I see your name.
I see, yeah. And we were just.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, there we go.
Okay, sorry. I'm using my phone and the computer and obviously I'm not doing either very well.
This is technological multitasking here.
Yeah. And, and just like regular multitasking, something's not going well. So actually, Ms. Gregory did an excellent presentation of, of the use of the COVID cares money that the county has received from the state. The 2021 appropriations that you provided to the commissioners, I believe in late January, maybe early February, hasn't really changed much since our last update. Possibly some more supplies have been expended. However, we have moved temporarily the payments for the testing sites to a grant that the Health Department had and, or had. And so we wanted to make sure that that money was used in accordance to the timeline of that particular grant. And so it is taking care of the testing site for us right now. And then the contractual, we're still continuing with the Security Pro who is going into our establishment. And I'm afraid I don't have any answers as to what experience they've had because I have not heard any updates recently on maybe the most recent good weather, I guess I could say, that we've experienced in Bloomington and, and all the people that we've seen out and about. So I haven't heard if there's been any particular issues with any of the establishments in town. Probably the fact that I haven't heard anything might be a good thing. So kind of leaving it there. So that's all I have for you guys. I'll try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Purdy. We'll check with council if there are any questions or comments here. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Purdy? Yes, Ms. Munson.
Yes. Do you have information to share with the public about the change in one of the vaccination sites from, from the convention center to IU facilities?
I do not. I know that that is something, I would think if Penny's on, she would be able to provide that update.
I don't think she gets on today.
I, I can give a little bit of an update on that. Tomorrow, I am planning on taking to the commissioners during their work session, an MOU that will provide for cooperation for the Health Department, the Board of Health, County Commissioners to cooperate with IU to provide a vaccination site at Assembly Hall. So IU has worked really hard to be approved to be a point of distribution and that came through. We're trying to get all of the, our decks in a row to get that opened up on Monday. I had a meeting along with Penny Cottle and Kathy Hewitt from the Health Department today with a couple of attorneys from IU and we're working on that MOU. And I expect to be able to talk at the public meeting, the work session tomorrow with the commissioners about this and get their preliminary approval. So it's exciting and we're just hopeful that this will be able to allow more people in our community to be vaccinated.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Bryce. Ms. Hawke?
Yes. Ms. Rice, could you confirm what had been reported on? Make sure it is still correct, that the people who've already received their first shot at the convention center will continue to go back to the convention center for their second shot.
That's correct. Yes, that, that is correct.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions or comments? From council? All right. I don't see any. Thanks again, Ms. Purdy, for joining us. And we'll look forward to hearing more from you at your next update.
Great. Thank you. You guys have a lovely evening.
You too. Okay, so that was item three A. We'll now move on to item three B, which is an update from Eric Evans, our Technical Services Department Director. And he's going to give an update on the status of our refurbishing the Nat U Hill Meeting Room. Welcome, Mr. Evans. Thanks for joining us.
Yes, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Okay. I've got a presentation I'm going to share. Okay. Obviously, for those of you that remember this far back, this is the, what our Nat Hill Room looks like. If you recall, we started having discussions about rehabbing the Nat Hill Room sometime before the lockdown. The, the two main concerns that we heard repeatedly about the meetings that would take place in the Nat Hill Room were that, number one, the sound in the room was problematic for the people that actually are in there working. So people that are on the different boards and committees had problems hearing what was going on in the room. The other issue that commonly had was the, the broadcast feed of the meetings from CATS. You know, CATS has a little broadcast booth up in the choir loft here. Their broadcast of the meetings was fairly low fidelity. The, the visual, the picture on it was very low definition and the sound had a fairly steady, low hum, low frequency hum on it. So those were things that we were looking to solve early on when we first started talking about rehabbing the Nat Hill Room. Obviously, the pandemic hit, things got locked down. We stopped using the Nat Hill Room. But for our public meetings, we adapted to Zoom. And for the last year, we've been having these meetings in this virtual space. There's been an explosion in the amount of public participation in the meetings. More people can come because they're not having to drive and find parking and balance that with family commitments. So when, when it became clear how Zoom was kind of changing how we did things as a county government, we pivoted on this project and added a couple bullet points that specifically would allow us to, when we return to the Nat Hill Room from meetings, to continue to have what's called a blended environment where we can have some people in the physical meeting space and some people coming in via Zoom to the virtual meeting space. And that can be people from the public. It could be people on boards. And so I, I think, so those were all things that were incumbent upon us as we started planning for this project. Let's see here. Let's look at my notes here. So one of the, with the sound problems that we were having in the room itself, one of the issues we ran into is that in order to get better amplification in the room so that people, you know, on the Board of Commissioners, people on the County Council could actually hear what was going on, we set up a couple extra speakers in the room. And that had an unintended effect of creating an environment that was less than desirable for the CATS people doing their broadcast. So that was one of the things that we had to balance in this project. How are we going to get it so that people that watch the broadcast can hear a good broadcast sound? But yet the people that are actually having to work in the meetings, you know, actually having to do the work, need to be able to hear what's going on so that they can do their work. So I put together a document that was a list of, of priorities for the rehab project. And I took it out to a number of different vendors. Ultimately, that made its way to four different vendors, two of which dropped out fairly quickly because the scope of the project was too large for them. There's too many different things going on within the meeting room. It was outside the scope of what they could do well. One, one of the remaining companies ended up dropping out. And so we've ended up choosing the best of the lot, which is a company called All-Pro. They're partnered with Sweetwater Music up in Fort Wayne, but they do have a national presence. So this plan that I'm going to give you that, you know, just kind of a brief outline of here tonight. This plan was drafted in conjunction with them. Tomorrow morning, I'll be going in front of the commissioners with the actual contract for signature with them. So if you look, let's, let's go on to the next slide here. Okay, this is a schematic of the room itself. This here is the riser where the council and the Board of Commissioners sits. This is the back of the room. And up in the balcony is where we have the broadcast booth and then the TSD representative sits to help put things up on the two screens, which are over on either side here. Before, a couple of years ago, the only sound amplification in the room itself came from four really bad, low-quality speakers that are recessed in the ceiling above this gallery space. So in the floor of the balcony, shooting down into the, the floor of the people sitting in the balcony. That was the only sound amplification in the room. So you guys up here on the riser had no real way to hear those speakers. We tried to turn them up, but they were really low-quality speakers and they would distort. So we kind of talked about a lot of different solutions to this problem. One of the things we decided to do was instead of having just one or two sound sources within the room that would have to be at a higher volume, which would run the risk of spoiling the environment for the broad, the TV broadcast team, we decided to have a, a number of different speakers throughout the room at a lower volume. So that'll give us sound amplification, but not creating a boomy environment. To that end, we are going to put both speakers at four locations here, here, here and here. This is going to be the, the microphone base. We're getting some new microphones. If you recall, the microphones in that room are these Shure long neck things with little, you know, you can bend them around. We're still going to be using those microphones, but every other one will be coming out of a base like this. So this is a speaker that's going to sit in front of you like the microphone has in the past. And it's got a discreet volume knob that you, as someone on the board, can control yourself. So if, you know, you're not hearing so well that particular night, maybe it's loud in the gallery or something, you, you'll have some individual control over your sound. These speakers have a anti-feedback circuit in it. As we've all learned using Zoom now, if you keep your speakers on your computer too loud so that the microphone picks it up, you'll get feedback. And, and so because these microphones are close to the speaker source, you would normally have that concern. But these are manufactured in such a way that they have a circuit that cancels it out. I do not know how that works and I'm fairly knowledgeable about a lot of electronic, you know, sound type gadgets. And so I, I can't really explain how that works, but it does work pretty nicely. I'm using a system like that now here as I'm talking to you guys. So that I think is going to be really nice for some of the people on, on the council, on the Board of Commissioners, where they can hear things more directly without muddying up the sound in the room. I'm going to go ahead and end my share for now. So one of the other problems we had that we needed to solve was the low fidelity on the video feed that would come from the CATS broadcast. You know, when, when people would watch the CATS broadcast at home, live as the meeting was going on, it looked like you were watching something on cable access TV from the eighties. It was very, it was very low resolution. The only way to fix that was going to be getting a higher bandwidth internet pipe coming to the courthouse. So what we did during the lockdown is we had, we partnered with Smithville Digital, who installed a new fiber circuit that's going from the Nat Hill Room down and, and directly to the Telco Hotel and then on directly to the CATS studio. This is going to allow them to have higher def broadcasts from, from our place. One of the complaints we would get commonly is that also on the CATS broadcast, there was this low-pitched hum that was going on that really made it hard to hear what was being said. That was because on, in the Nat Hill Room, the wires that would come off the microphones would go under the floor across the way to the choir loft, you know, up to the rack in the choir loft. And at some point over the years, those wires had, had become frayed or at some point had been exposed to too much of a power source. And so there's, there's like a certain harmonic interference that goes on between the power source and the signal that's passing through on the microphone cables. And that's what caused that low-frequency hum. This new system obviously will be bypassing that entirely and using a different technology actually to bring the sound signal from the microphones to the processing unit. We talked about sound reinforcement. Let's talk a little bit about the visual aspects of working in the Nat Hill Room. Let's go back to my presentation. We're, okay. Okay, so if you look at this and remember, we have these two TVs over here on the side. The problem with the two TV situation is first of all, the TVs weren't large enough. And for where you guys sit along this bench, and it's even worse for the commissioners that sit on this bench, it's really hard to make out what's going on on those TVs unless you have, unless it's something just like a talking head or a large picture presentation. Yes.
Excuse me. I, I don't, I can't see your shared screen right now.
Excuse me, I, I don't, I can't see your shared screen right now.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I forgot to press this.
Thank you.
How about that? Can you see it now?
Much better, thank you.
Yeah, that, okay, yeah, that was my fault. Um, okay, so. So solving the problem, as you remember, every year when we get to budget time, you know, we, we kind of try to come up with a better solution for how you guys can see the budget be manipulated on the fly. Uh, and it's real difficult with these TVs being as far as they are to see that spreadsheet. You know, you either have to blow it up so you can only see a few cells and whatnot. But at the same time, I didn't want to go without the TVs along the side because that's what the people in the gallery are going to be able to see. And now that we're talking about having blended meetings where people are coming in via Zoom, uh, it's going to be important that we have a monitor that we can dedicate to, you know, the, the person who's the guest speaker and then maybe the other monitor to dedicate to whatever presentation they're showing. So I had kind of an aha moment one time late at night. Uh, I was watching on YouTube, a different city council meeting from someplace. It, it was actually, uh, it was a YouTube uh, video of someone freaking out at a city council meeting, which is always good for a laugh. But I noticed these guys here in the middle on these AV carts. Uh, and, and I got to thinking, we could make something like that actually. So what I'm thinking of doing is getting carts very similar to this. But having Richard, the guy who did the woodwork on the lectern in the Nat Hill Room, to recall, the lectern that, that he did, he's a very talented woodworker. So what we're going to basically do is construct two of these carts that are kind of low profile. The monitor will be at a bit of an angle so we can, you know, sidle it upright uh, beneath where you guys are sitting. But instead of this being like uh, you know, kind of stark looking uh, metal, it's going to be uh, a wood based cabinet that is going to match the wood of the lectern and the benches themselves. Inside that cabinet, we can, we're going to hide a, a computer and actually a battery. These things are going to be completely standalone, they won't even need to be plugged in some of the time. So essentially, they can be moved on the fly in the middle of a meeting if someone needs to get a better view at something like that. So that is the plan for how we're going to handle that. Let's stop this here. And go back to my notes. Okay. Um, a couple of other benefits uh, of the project is uh, we are going to, so the system that you can mix the sound and, and, and have it sound good in the room will have an onboard recording system on it. Uh, that will take place of the FTR computer that sits off to the side. Uh, that computer will still likely be there because it'll end up being used by Kim and other people. But we won't have to use the FTR recording software, which you, you guys may not be aware of, but the FTR recording software is not particularly good software and it was not designed for this application. We'll be able to do digital recordings right from uh, the processing unit. And then finally, one of the things we wanted to address with the project was making sure that from an accessibility standpoint, uh, we were doing the best we could to allow people that otherwise wouldn't be able to come to the meeting to attend either as an audience, public person or as a, you know, member of a board. Uh, and so with the Zoom integration, we'll allow for that. The other thing we're looking at doing is uh, getting actual professional closed captions for the big meetings that we have. Uh, now Zoom has automatic closed captioning. Uh, I, I, I've done a lot of experimentation with it and I just don't think it's ready for prime time. And I, I'm hoping to shop around and find a professional captioning service that if we can't afford to do it, maybe we can get a grant that'll help us do that. Uh, that'll have one of the advantages of having a professional captioning team actually doing the meetings as they happen live. Uh, could actually be used by the council for their record keeping, for their minutes and whatnot, which would save someone from having to transcribe it down the road. So from a expense standpoint, you know, I, I think it'll be a worthwhile expense. But certainly, I mean, you know, in the last couple of years of my dad's life, uh, he always had the closed captioning on. And if you've ever watched closed captioning on TV, there is a big difference between automatic captions and ones that are being professionally done. Uh, and the automatic captions just are very distracting because sometimes things are just really humorous. They, you know, comes up with really funny and bizarre things. So uh, I, I really think that if we can, if we can find a good partner that we can afford to do, I think getting professional captions would be the way to go on that. So I know that's a lot of stuff to throw at you in one sitting. Uh, what kind of questions do you have for me?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Evans, for the very informative uh, presentation. And uh, let's check with council. Now I saw Ms. Hawks hand first and then Mr. Iverson.
Yes, Mr. Evans, when you were presenting the uh, uh, slide where it showed the unknown meeting where you were trying to see, get ideas. And I, I saw like three of the TV screens, but then I thought I heard you say just to get due two. And then I counted off the number of members on the board and it was that same number there that we have. So perhaps we should do three?
Right, so we, we could, you know, once we get the design for one of them done, we can do as many as we want. Uh, the, the, the view screens that I intend to use are substantially larger than the ones that were in the picture. Uh, so I, you know, my thought was to start with two and if we need to get a third one, we can certainly make a third one. You know, the, the standalone carts are something that are separate from the contract we're doing with All Pro. So that expense is on us. I'm thinking with the expense of the woodworking taken out, those carts we can probably produce for about twelve to thirteen hundred bucks a pop. And then plus whatever it costs for the woodworking, uh, which, you know, Richard's doing the labor. Obviously there's, you know, materials and whatnot. So, you know, I, I, my vision was to do two of them to see if that'll work. But if we need to get a third one, we certainly can.
Thank you. Mr. Iverson?
I, I've got a comment and then a question, Mr. Evans. The comment is, I really like those uh, the battery operated uh, carts that you're just talking about. Because when we're sitting on the floor, we're not up on the dais, uh, that's going to be really easy to have those screens either down below or up top. Like that's, that's going to be quite nice uh, it, to have that option. And then my question was, uh, in the Zoom environment, uh, having the camera this close uh, to our faces is quite nice. It, it lets us, you know, show emotion or lets us show, you know, different, different things. And I was wondering how, what your thoughts were in terms of cameras and the way they're going to operate in a, a shared environment.
Yeah, that's a great question. I did not get into detail on how we're going to do the cameras. We had a lot of discussions, there were a couple of different ways we could do that. Uh, i- if you recall, one of the things that we have in the Nat Hill Room is we have several uh, professional quality broadcast high def cameras that CATS controls. So if you watch the CATS broadcast back on one of the old meetings back before the lockdown, when we were meeting in person, they zoom in, you know, when, when you're talking uh, on the board, they, they zoom right in and get a one shot of you. And, and they're doing all that stuff on the fly up in the choir loft. So what we're going to do uh, for our Zoom feed that we broadcast out to people that are joining via Zoom, we are taking the CATS feed and splitting it off and that's what we're broadcasting. So we're actually going to have edited on the fly by the CATS people. That's what is going to be broadcast out of our Zoom channel. So if there's someone speaking at the lectern, there'll be a close up of them. If there are two council people sitting next to each other, talking to each other, that could be done in a two shot because they can zoom in and zoom out. Uh, we're also getting two additional cameras uh, for that purpose. So, you know, also on the CATS live broadcast, we'll have different angles than what we did before. I don't know if that'll be noticeable to people unless they have a really vivid memory. But yeah, that's how we're going to do that. That way you guys don't have to worry about setting up a laptop with a camera in front of you. That way you don't have to worry about having a small webcam that, you know, you've got to adjust. That's all being taken care of by the CATS team.
I knew you'd thought of something.
That was a, that was a hard thing to solve. Uh, and it really, it really came down to whether or not CATS was going to be able to split off that feed and, and send it into a computer uh, for us to broadcast on Zoom. That, that took a little bit of experimentation.
Thanks.
Mr. Deckard?
Thank you very much and thank you, Eric Evans, for coming in here and talking about this. Um, and the first thing I'll just say is, uh, I, I never in a billion year, million years could we have imagined how much we've had to adapt to that you all have been carrying on this to get us to this platform. If you would have asked me in January of last year, if I thought that this was all possible, I, I would have been very skeptical and concerned and you all have done that and thank you. And thanks for tackling this. I guess the only question I have is, this all sounds exceedingly fabulous. I heard about that hum back when you could go around town a little bit more. I'd hear about that hum every place I went to that where people would check into our meetings. What is your approximate timeline, if you have one, on, on being done with all this? Hopefully, um, minus the follow up things that you have to do.
Sure. Uh, okay, so I go before the commissioners tomorrow to get the contract signed. Uh, the contract says that the vendor will start work within sixty days of the contract being signed as long as they have all the equipment they need. That's going to be a big question mark. Uh, there is a global chip shortage uh, that's, that's going on in part because of the situation in China. And that is made getting all sorts of electronic equipment difficult. Uh, and, and so that will probably affect the timing on it a little bit. Now, having said that, if we get into a situation where the rehab project isn't to a point where we can start having live meetings in Nat Hill and the governor says that we can go back or need to go back to live meetings, I have an interim uh, portable setup that uh, we'll be able to use in the interim. If, if you guys want to spend a couple of minutes, I can tell you a little bit about that now or I can tell you privately if you want.
Sure, yeah, feel free to.
Okay. Okay, well, so in short, uh, one of the other bits of technology that came about in part because of the Zoom phenomena, uh, and everyone happened to telecommunicate for the last year. This company called Owl Labs came up with a product. Uh, let's go ahead and share my screen again. Okay, can you see my screen share this time? Okay. Okay, so if you look here, this is a picture of the Owl Labs device. And essentially what this is, is it's a set of speakers. It's got microphones, it's got a three hundred and sixty degree camera at the top and it's got these little cameras here. Uh, each one of these cameras will broadcast a panoramic view of the room. So you're actually taking a three hundred and sixty degree view of the room and it's spreading it out as a panorama. Uh, the other cameras on the owl will focus in on, on someone's voice. So you'll see in this panoramic view, you've got this person here that's talking and this guy here that's talking. And it senses that and it does a discreet zoom in uh, on them. So uh, they came out with this right at the start of the quarantine. At the end of it, they had it so that you could link two of these together. So uh, I've got two of them that we can use as a portable thing. So even, you know, after we get stuff done in the Nat Hill Room, we can still have these to do meetings in large rooms and we can set them up on tripods. And really with very little work, we can broadcast a, a meeting where again, you get, you get a zoom in view when you're talking. You get the full view of the people sitting around the meeting table. And um, uh, and you know, it works pretty nicely. And uh, I, I think two of them on tripods in front of the bench where you guys are at will cover the Nat Hill Room kind of nicely. It won't be as nice as having CATS editing it on the fly. But again, I wanted to get something that we could use in the interim uh, in case the project isn't finished in time and then also could use later on. So we're not just spending money to not use later on. So that is my plan on that.
Those may have some good applications with boards and commissions as well, too.
Yes, we, we've got a couple of them uh, already deployed, one in emergency management and one in the health department. We've got two of them deployed. And yeah, it, it's a good way to cover a long room. Yeah, I'll be honest with you, uh, so.
I think, I think I saw Ms. Munson with her hand up earlier and then Ms. Hawk again.
My question has to do with uh, Zoom participation, whether by a council member or a staff member or a, a public member. And uh, I find it very helpful to see a blow up of the face of somebody who is um, speaking. And is, will that be possible for the, for people participating from wherever they are uh, on Zoom?
Yes, so, okay, so how that'll work for you, for, say you're physically in the Nat Hill Room and someone like a developer from out of state is doing a presentation on something, you will be able to see, when they're speaking, you'll be able to see them like you do now on Zoom where it highlights the person who's actually actively speaking. You'll be able to see that on one of the big monitor screens that. Which I, I did neglect to mention, the two monitors on the side of the room are being replaced with seventy inch ones. So they, they're very large, they're also going to be like very crisp pictures, you know. Obviously with the historic nature of the room, we couldn't really do like a video wall without, you know.
Yeah.
We all want the room to continue to look cool from a historic standpoint. So, you know, we didn't want to do a video wall. Uh, to follow up on your question, uh, how it'll work for people from home, they will again be seeing the feed as it's edited on the fly by CATS. Even though they're watching it through the Zoom uh, link, uh, they'll be seeing whatever CATS has up on the screen, which is whoever's talking, whether it's the guest, whether it's someone physically in the room.
So Zoom will be sending out what, what CATS is producing?
Yes. Yeah, well, Zoom, yeah, Zoom will be sending out uh, a couple of different feeds, one of them being the CATS feed. Uh, we'll also have the ability to cut between the CATS feed and like if someone in the room is going to be doing a presentation. I didn't talk about that. We have a new device that if someone wants to present something from their own laptop, you'll get a little dongle, you know, like a USB thing. And, and you just plug that into your laptop and it'll broadcast it to the screens on the side. You know, we find a lot of times vendors don't want to use a loaner laptop, they want to use their own laptop. So um, I, did, did that answer your question?
Yes, that's great, thank you.
There's all sorts of different moving parts here, it's hard to remember, you know. It's hard to remember what I've told you about, so.
I was going to mention that I know that when we were talking about the convention center, our present convention center, that for us to work as best we can from there, they're going to need similar kind of investment in their meeting rooms and so forth. One would think that. One would think that some of the things that you have spent so much time working on and learning how it all works might also, that knowledge then can help out the convention center. I don't know whether that's the same thing, but it sounds like we're both, in both cases, you're working with historical buildings where you're, it's not as easy to move around things. And you've had to work around that and not destroy our beautiful courthouse. So I appreciate all the work that you've done on this. It's just amazing. I appreciate it.
It's, it's a neat project. I mean, you know, one of the problems with the room itself is you've got the plaster ceiling, that's a dome, that does all sorts of weird things to the sound. All of the walls are either flat plaster or glass that reflects sound. If we didn't have carpet in that room, we'd really be in trouble. The carpet really is what soaks up the majority of the sound bouncing.
We gotta keep that blue carpet in there. I love that.
I think there is talks about replacing it with different carpet. I would defer to Angie on that. Yeah.
All right. Ms. Wiltz?
First, I just want to echo my appreciation and just, I'm impressed. It's a lot. And I know you've spent a lot of time on it. It shows. I've actually been in a meeting with one of those, maybe it was a predecessor to the owl, but those little things. And it's a little creepy how they seek you out when you speak. You know, because it turns its little head and looks at you. But they work really well. And I'm excited that you have those because that, that really does facilitate kind of being able to see everybody in the room. I did have a question. At the risk of asking for the moon, is there an option, and I don't even know if this is going to be legal eventually, but will there be an option for the public to participate via the Zoom link? Or is that strictly kind of a, a one-way? Because it's.
No, no, that's part of the goal of this. That's absolutely part of the goal.
So when they, when we have public comment, people will, and will still be able to be on Zoom in their living rooms and participate for sure.
That, yeah, that was definitely my intent on this. Essentially how that'll work is you'll, you know, all the big meetings will have a member of T S D that's actually working the meeting, kind of like it is now, but physically there in the room. On that, you know, it'll work in much the same way. If someone from the public is coming in via Zoom and they want to talk, they raise their hand on the little Zoom thing. And then the T S D person will alert you guys up at the board that, you know, there's five people that want to make public comment. When it's time for them to public, do their public comment, you turn on their mic. If we're allowing them to do, you know, camera feeds, we can put that camera feed on the monitors. All, all of that stuff is, is part, part of what we're doing on, on this. Yes.
That's amazing. And I guess it's for someone else, I guess, maybe even Margie to, to answer about the legality of, of that. And if that's ultimately going to be allowed. I just know there's been some question about this remote participation. So.
Yeah, I'm happy to address that. We are still continuing to talk to the public access counselor and, and encourage them to open up and, and frankly, to make our public meetings, you know, part of sort of the 21st century. But, you know, we, the public access counselor is limited. He doesn't know exactly what the general assembly is going to do. I do think that the public's participation is a lot easier for us to accommodate than the, than accommodating like your participation via Zoom.
Right.
Yeah. So, you know, they care, I think that they wouldn't care if we let the public attend, however the public could attend. But they're probably, probably still going to be pretty strict about elected officials participating in person. That's the piece that we really got, we have to lobby. But yeah, I, I think we're going to do all that we can to get the public participating as much as possible and in, in as many different ways as possible.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
I think my family will be glad to get me out of the house and back into the Nat U Hill room. I can, I can't speak for anybody else, though. Okay. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Evans? Well, thanks again, Mr. Evans, for the, for the very helpful and informative presentation tonight. And we look forward to, to keeping track of everything going forward. Please, you know, come back and give us any updates as necessary in future meetings as well, too.
All right. Thanks.
Have a good evening.
See you later.
Thanks.
All right. And up next, for item four, I'd like to invite Maggie Sullivan, who is the Lake Monroe Watershed Coordinator. She's going to give us an update on the Lake Monroe Watershed Management Plan. And as Ms. Sullivan, and the real, I see she's here. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here. I can't seem to turn my video on, but that's all right. I appointed to apologize, the document that was in your packet was not the document that I meant to send you. So I will be sending you the correct one, but for now I have a very short, about 10-minute presentation just to let you know what we are doing. So my name is Maggie Sullivan and I am the Watershed Coordinator for Lake Monroe. And we are working on writing a watershed management plan for the lake. I am sure you are all familiar with Lake Monroe. It's technically, it's not a lake, it's a reservoir. The dam was constructed in 1964. You may be less familiar with the term watershed, but the very simple definition, a watershed is the area of land that drains into a particular body of water, whether that's a lake or a stream or an ocean. And we care about watersheds because what happens on the land in the watershed runs into the water. So anything, if you're out washing your car, that soap could go into a stream and go straight into Lake Monroe. So these are the kinds of things we are looking at called non-point source pollution. This is the Lake Monroe Watershed. It's about 440 square miles. More than half of it's in Brown County. We've got about 20% in Monroe and about 20% in Jackson. People tend to assume that Bloomington drains to Lake Monroe, but for the most part it doesn't. It actually drains down primarily to Salt Creek downstream from the lake. And there are three main tributaries, the North Fork of Salt Creek, Middle Fork and South Fork. So we're writing watershed management plan. And basically that's just a plan of action that says, what are the problems and what are the solutions to get back to our water quality goals? A good plan needs to be data-driven. So we want to be using science. We want to address all the stakeholder concerns. We want to get community support and we want to make sure our goals are smart goals. They're specific, they're measurable, they're attainable, they're relevant, and they have a time base to them. So that we have a lot of people involved. This project was founded by the Friends of Lake Monroe, which is a local nonprofit. They got the grant in order to do this project with matching funds primarily from the Monroe County Stormwater Fund and the City of Bloomington Utilities. And then we have a steering committee with about 20 members. Cheryl Munson's on our committee, among several others from Brown County, Monroe County and Jackson County, trying to get a wide variety of opinions and stakeholders. And they hired me as the Watershed Coordinator. So we do a lot of education and outreach, which has been interesting in this time of COVID. But a lot of press releases and presentations like this one, I did get to present to school groups over Zoom and show off my cool watershed model that I borrowed from the Soil and Water Conservation District. We are hoping to do some in-person tabling and a tour later this year. We'll see how that goes. We will be installing signs, letting people know when they enter the watershed. I've been working with the county officials in Monroe, Brown, Jackson and Bartholomew County to get those approved. And we hope to put them in later this spring. The first year of the project, it's two-year project. We've basically been looking at what data is available. So GIS maps, previous studies, and then collecting some observations in the field. This is a map that shows the impairments that were identified by the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. So they do sampling about every six years and come through. And so they identified there's some E. coli issues in Little Salt Creek and Crooked Creek. There's habitat issues, low dissolved oxygen and low biological integrity in South Fork Salt Creek. And then the lake itself has some taste and odor issues, algal blooms you're probably familiar with, and mercury and fish. We are fortunate to live in a watershed that's largely forested, which is a great thing. Forests do a really good job stabilizing the soil. And then the agriculture in the watershed is limited to mostly along the stream valleys, which if you know the topography of Brown County, that's the flattest land that's available. And there's very little development in our watershed. So I went out and I observed about 240 different stream crossings to try and get an idea of the conditions of the streams that flow into Lake Monroe. The big things I was looking at were erosion. So where's the stream bank eroding? Livestock access. So when cattle or horses or other animals have access, they can increase the erosion and they also, there's a manure factor that can be an issue. And then riparian buffer, which is a fancy way of talking about the plants on the edge of the stream. What we want to see is trees and a nice big wide band of them because that stabilizes the stream bank and it also filters anything that's running into the stream. Catches some of the, the trash or sediment or anything else that might be flowing across the land. We're also collecting water quality data. And when I say we, I mean the Limnology Lab at IU. And so they've been doing stream sampling, lake sampling, and what we're calling our watershed sampling blitz. So they have been sampling the three main forks of Salt Creek plus Crooked Creek coming into the lake and then the water going out of the lake. They just collected their last sample. So they've got one year of once a month stream samples. And then they've been sampled within the lake all last year from April through October, three different points at two different depths. And we have some other information as well from the Army Corps of Engineers, does sampling every year. And then our watershed sampling blitz, we did one last September and then we're actually going out, I can't believe it's next week, April 2nd. We'll be sending about 70 volunteers out to collect water samples from 125 sites. And this is to try and get a snapshot view and see if we can notice any patterns, if there's any particular areas where we have higher concentrations of pollutants. So what are we looking for? Our main contaminants of concern are E. coli. And that's particularly in some of the streams, hasn't, doesn't seem to be an issue in the lake. Sediment and then nutrients, phosphorus and nitrogen. We're going to take our results to try and calculate the pollutant loads and then calculate how much reduction do we need? Then we'll set our goals. Say we want to reduce phosphorus by 30%, identify critical areas if we can. And that could be a particular geographic area, or it could be a particular type of land use. And then we'll choose projects to get us to our goals. We started off this project by gathering stakeholder concerns. So we had about 110 people at two different forums, co-hosted with a League of Women Voters, one in Bloomington and one in Nashville. And, you know, I had a wide, wide variety of comments. Drinking water obviously came up a lot. Sediment, basa species, algal blooms, forest management. So we've taken all those concerns and tried to look at, you know, which ones are supported by data, what evidence is out there? Can we quantify it? Is it something that's within our scope and is it something we want to focus on? So we've taken all of that and distilled it down to 12 problem statements. And so we're working to quantify those and identify potential sources. So our first problem statement has to do with sediment. Sediment is an issue because it silts in the lake, makes it shallower, and it also can carry contaminants with it. And there's a lot of possible sources of sediment. It'll be coming from stream bank erosion, lakeshore erosion. Could be livestock churning up soil, could be construction sites, could be tilling ground for agriculture or soil disturbance from forestry. So we're still working to try and understand what are our main contributing sources there. Nutrients, phosphorus in particular can contribute to algal blooms in the lake. And again, there's lots of potential sources. It could actually be the soil is bringing those nutrients along with it. It could be manure or human manure. It could be fertilizer on golf courses or at home or on farms. So trying to get an idea of where the nutrients are coming from. E. coli is an issue. It's a health risk. Sometimes beaches have to close if the E. coli counts are too high. The big question for E. coli, is it coming from Bessie or Bambi or Bobby? So we're actually doing a kind of special testing where they look at the RNA of the E. coli and that can tell them what animal it came from. So hopefully we'll have a little more information this spring about where we need to concentrate our efforts there. We're also looking at low biological integrity, which means that they surveyed the fish and the little critters and they didn't see the diversity they want. And that's generally a habitat issue that we'll be looking at. Trash and plastic is mentioned by a lot of people. We do shoreline cleanups with Friend of Lake Monroe every month. And basa plants are a common issue everywhere. And then flooding, it's not exactly a water quality issue, but it's definitely something that comes up particularly around Nashville when they're so close to North Fork Salt Creek. A lot of people are curious about the recreational impacts, you know, boats on Lake Monroe, it can get pretty crowded out there. What are the impacts of stirring up the soil in the lake or whatever else is going on? Same thing with forests. We know forests are great for stabilizing the soil, but what about forest management? What comes in? What happens if we come in to do a timber harvest? So we're looking at those as potential sources. One issue that most watersheds face is there's not a single governing body that covers the whole area. So whatever we do, we'll have to work with multiple counties and towns and cities and federal government and state government and get everybody working together. There's some concerns about potential deregulation. There's a bill at the State House right now that would limit the ability for local governments to have ordinances that are stricter than state requirements. And we're worried that that could impact things like the eco zones that Monroe County has to help protect our watersheds. And then the big issue that everyone faces is just a lack of public education and awareness. A lot of us don't know how our actions can impact water quality. So we are looking at the problems, but how are we going to figure out the solutions? Well, some of those potential solutions could be restoration projects. So putting in a nice, healthy riparian buffer along all our streams, maybe even with a few more trees than in this picture. Restoring wetlands. This is a picture of Bean Blossom Bottoms, which is in our neighboring Bean Blossom Watershed. But a great example of a place that traps sediment and nutrients and provides excellent habitat. There might even be sections of stream that need some restoration, put in at the curves that are natural and a nice, healthy flood plain. Another possibility is best management practices. And that's kind of a catch-all phrase for people doing things that protect water quality. So that could be fencing cattle so they can't get into streams. That could be maintaining your septic system at home. That could be using cover crops, using erosion control practices on construction sites or when you're doing a timber harvest. And then a lot of it comes down to education, teaching people how they can make a difference. You know, only rain down the storm drain is not as big of a message in our watershed. We don't have a lot of storm drains, but things like do your part, be septic smart is pretty huge. We think there's about 9,000 septic systems in the watershed. And I'm just very fond of this image. When you fertilize the lawn, you're not just fertilizing the lawn. So at the end of this all, we'll have an action plan that says what we want to do. And everything is going to be voluntary. We're not coming in telling people what they have to do on their land, but we will, are hoping to get additional grant funding for a cost share program to say, hey, if you want to put in some fencing, we can help you pay for it. We want to put in demonstration sites, show people what a riparian buffer is, host some field days and do lots of education. So that'll be all part of the implementation phase. But the management plan itself will be done in January and then we get into the fun part, which is implementation. So some quick things that you can do at home, whatever watershed you live in, if you have a septic tank, make sure you're maintaining it, pumping it every few years. If you fertilize, use them sparingly. If you're lucky enough to live along a stream, a pond or a lake, leave a buffer of plants to help filter that water and stabilize those banks. Take up pet poop. Nobody likes to do it, but it's an important thing to do. And when you're out visiting Lake Monroe, practice leave no trace. If you're interested in learning more, I encourage you to check out Friends of Lake Monroe. We are a nonprofit that depends on membership dues and grants for our operations. So that is my presentation for tonight, but I am happy to entertain questions and comments.
Eric, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I was, I was saying, commenting how terrific this presentation was and thanking you for, for giving us this information. It was just fantastic. With the implementation phase that's scheduled to begin in January 2022, right?
So the, we will be publishing the watershed plan and ending this grant in January 2022.
Okay.
This summer we'll be applying for a second grant. So you may be hearing from us directly or indirectly as we start lining up matching funds for that application. So that application will go in this fall. And if it is approved, we will get the funding next fall. And then that would be another two to three years of funding for actual implementation.
Okay. And then how long do you anticipate implementation will last?
Well, fixing watersheds is pretty much an ongoing forever process.
Yeah, yeah.
So the grants tend to come in two or three-year chunks and it's not uncommon for a group to get. And it's not uncommon for a group to get multiple implementation grants once they have their plan written and know what they want to do.
So the goal, this is a long-term effort.
Absolutely.
In terms of what the goal is, great, great, very good. Any, any other questions or comments from council? Yes, Mr. Decker?
Thank you very much, and thank you Maggie for being here. I love your presentation and I love the way that you do it. I've known you a long time and I know that you're a straight shooter and I think that presentation is, is very direct and I love it. And the reason I do so much is I think the lake gets taken completely for granted. I think people assume that it, it was naturally there and it will naturally always be there. And they don't see all the things that have gone into both making it, constructing it, all that it does. And they, they neglect to, to think about what they're putting or doing that goes into that water. And I think getting the, the buy-in from the community to make sure we're all doing the best things we need to be doing. I think that, that will require a lot of presentations like that, but it will bring people along towards it. So thank you for doing this. I guess my ongoing question to you would be just please as directly as you can, let us know what you need to be supportive of you and the friends moving forward. And we'll continue to do what we can as we figure all this out.
Great. And you know, that's one concrete thing. If you know of groups that would be interested in a presentation like this, I'm hoping to make the rounds and hit not only government bodies, but like Rotary Clubs or church groups. Cause a lot of people don't really learn about watersheds and water quality. But it's a big part of our lives and our drinking water.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, Ms. Wiltz?
My question's more of a, a public information kind of question. And so you mentioned some of the things that folks can do and particularly getting some of the cost share type of, of things. Is this something that right now folks could be looking maybe NRCS or some other? Are there, where can people go to get information on what they can do now, I guess is my question.
Great question. When it comes to doing things on your property, then NRCS or the Soil and Water Conservation Districts are absolutely great places to start. I'm working closely with all of those groups in our watershed. There's a lot of resources online just on how to be a good steward of water. My favorite is probably Clear Choices Clean Water, which was founded as a watershed project and now is a nonprofit that just does education about water quality.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Munson?
Thank you Maggie. I knew it would be such a great presentation because I get to talk to you monthly or sometimes more than that. I, there's one thing I'd like the public to know. I think members of the council probably do realize this. But the Lake Monroe watershed is really the, about the only place in Monroe County where we can have a reservoir similar in size to Lake Monroe that would satisfy the water needs of residents and businesses in our county. The geology of Monroe County simply does not give us any other alternatives. And this means we have a lifelong commitment to caring for our lake.
Excellent point.
Very good, Ms. Hawke?
Just as a reminder, because we feel so connected to Lake Monroe. Of course, by age, I remember before we had Lake Monroe, it was pretty exciting seeing it go in. But that, as much as we'd like to think it's our lake, it really isn't our lake. And, and you know, it's not been that many years ago that Indianapolis was indicating they were going to come down and, and start using that water. And so it's not just Monroe County who has a responsibility. But we can do our part. But for any of this to really make a difference, we need to bring in the other counties. We've been told that for decades, that it's, you know, Brown County, it's Jackson, the other counties. So, but just to hear how we might be able to help on our own personal property. I have major watersheds in my property. I fight that all the time, that water coming down the hill so fast. Never buy a house at the bottom of the hill. But it, that is very interesting, but I just wanted to make sure we all recognize this cannot be solved just by Monroe County, it just simply cannot.
That's absolutely true, and I'm really excited. We've made some good connections in Brown County and in Jackson County to try and get everyone involved. I will say, I feel like Monroe County, and this was a comment that came out in our public listening sessions, Monroe County benefits more from the lake than Brown County or Jackson County, even though part of the lake is in Brown County and all of the drainage area. So that's something to keep in mind as well, but you're absolutely right. This has to be a joint effort.
Yes, Mr. Iverson?
Two things. First of all, I noticed that signups for your Citizen Science Day have closed. So congratulations on that. It's quite an accomplishment to have so many people interested that, that it's full. So that's wonderful. Yeah. And, and the second thing I was really happy to hear in your presentation was your emphasis on septic systems, which, you know, are quite a bit around here in Monroe County. And you know, there's, we're, we're doing everything we can, of course, to get those, those permits out there for people. And just, I wanted to really reinforce the point that you made is to get those things checked regularly. Don't wait until you're trying to sell the home or the property, to get, get, get the things checked out regularly. It can really be expensive if you put it off and, and dangerous to the environment, as you pointed out.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? All right. Well, thanks again, Ms. Sullivan, for the fantastic presentation and we look forward to keeping in touch. Have a good evening. Okay, on to item five. Our legal department.
Item five, council, I move to approve ordinance 2021-07, an ordinance of the Monroe County Council concerning certain actions and proceedings with respect to the financing of certain Richland apartments.
Second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Decker. I should have reminded everybody, Mr. McKemms are normal, seconder, but appreciate Mr. Decker stepping in there. All right, Mr. Cockrell, welcome. We've had a few meetings regarding this topic. And I know we've got some representatives from the organization here who's joining us. Do we have everyone on who needs to, to be in the meeting right now?
Let me check, I believe so. Yes.
Okay.
And, and I'll make my comments fairly brief. When last we spoke, I think the, we, we talked a lot about the project. I think the, the company representative told you the number of units and where they were and, and that these are affordable housing units for senior citizens. Since the meeting, we did have our Economic Development Commission meeting, which had a public hearing component to it. And both the plan and the recommendation for the ordinance were both approved unanimously. I will say that there's one change in this ordinance from the one we had last time. And so I think I'll have to ask you guys to make an amendment. One of the addresses was off one number. I believe it was 5142 and now it's 5141. And that, I think the corrected version is in your packet tonight. So it would be with the address associated with Matthews Drive. The 6151 Matthews Drive, it would be the correct. So I would ask that you make that amendment before you guys make your final decision on this tonight. Again, this is for a private activity bond that, you know, in order to get the tax exempt status, it has to run through a, a public entity. And so we don't, the county itself has no, nothing, no credit on the line or has made no promise to make any kind of payment towards this private activity. We're just saying that, yes, we do support senior affordable housing in, in these areas with this plan.
Okay, very good. So in terms of making an amendment, we'll need somebody to do that and would be happy to entertain that at any point. I don't know if this would, this is the appropriate time to do that or not, but.
Are we amending, we're not amending the ordinance, we're amending my motion to approve it because it was already changed, correct?
Let's see what Ms. Rice has to say here.
I think Kate has it right. I think Kate's, Kate's exactly right.
Okay, well, in that case, I would like to amend my motion to reflect the changes that have been made most recently regarding the Matthews, 6151 Matthews address and incorporate the new version of that ordinance with those corrections into our minutes.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? All right, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote to accept it.
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
So now we'll go back to discussion on the underlying motion? Okay, did, would, are there any representatives who'd like to also make any statements or, or comments?
I think we, we covered last time, went through what the financing was and what the project was. If you have any questions in addition to what we did last time, we'd be happy to address those.
And on behalf of the, of the board, the Richland Board and the development team, we do want to thank you for your support and for, for really being supportive of affordable housing in that region. So we know it's going to have a very positive impact as it has already. So we appreciate you guys supporting this.
Great, thank you. All right, do we have any questions or comments from council? See Ms. Hawke's hand raised?
My sister's on that board, so I can still vote for this, right? Is there any reason why I could not vote for this because my sister's on the board?
You've disclosed it and you have no pecuniary interest, I assume. So as long as you don't have a pecuniary interest and you've obviously told the public, you're absolutely fine to vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawke. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll see if there's any public comment. And if there's any members of the public who'd like to make comment, please use the raise hand function. Does not appear we have any public comments, so we will take a roll call vote, please.
Blair Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you very much.
You.
And next item is item six, our probation department.
Council, I move to approve the probation department's request to create a new, new account lines in Fund 9122-0000 JDAI Coordination.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, welcome, Ms. McPhee.
Hi, thank you so much. Most of you are aware that we receive grant funds through the Department of Corrections for Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative. That grant cycle is July 1 through June 30th. However, last year because of the pandemic, we were allowed to extend the 1920 grant that should have expired June 30th, all the way through December 31st. So while that was great, it gave us an opportunity to spend those funds that we would have spent in 12 months during 18 months. What that's resulted in is we, we spent those funds and didn't do a whole lot with the current grant funds. So what we were able to do with support from our JDAI strategist and Department of Corrections is we submitted a grant amendment. Several of the dollars that we had allotted were for in-person events. We like to get together during the lunchtime, we like to feed people, we like to hold trainings, we like to pay folks for travel and things like that. And because of the shelter in place and the, the lack of likely, the unlikelihood that we'll be doing much in-person gathering between now and the end of June, we're asking that those funds be redistributed into things to support some of the virtual work that we're doing. So for instance, when we have a virtual workshop, many of you are probably familiar. When you go to a workshop, maybe they'll provide a book on the topic or they have some snack items or they have fidget items. So we're trying to make the virtual experience as tolerable as possible. A couple of our workshops, workshops are all day. We even have a couple that are two days. And two days is a lot in person, it's a whole lot when you're trying to do virtual. We also started last year and during the grant, doing care packages for kids and families. And there really wasn't anything spectacular in those other than just being a nice way for probation staff to be able to drop off a surprise for the kids that we were involved with. So they would have things like school supplies. We did headphones, we did masks, we did pens and pencils and paper, crayons if they were younger kids. We did things like playing cards and bubble wands and some things that were kind of interactive and fun. And then we always were sure to include food items. I don't know if any of you have school age kids, but you know, once mine were home for a while, the grocery bill was going, was not getting any lower. And so we tried also to provide snack items for the kids. And not only the kids in the family, but we looked at who was living with that child. And we provided things for younger siblings, older siblings, parents. We did personal hygiene items, so toothpaste, deodorant, toothbrushes. We did things like winter hats and gloves when the weather started to turn. So again, trying to really connect with the youth and families and let them know we're not just here for compliance to catch them doing something wrong and, and have a response to that, but really just a way to reach out and say, you know, we're thinking of you and we care about you. So the request is because when we made the amendment, we created need for pots of money that didn't previously exist. So the request is to transfer some of the money, but then also create new line items where they didn't exist previously.
Got it. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council on this request? Mr. Iverson?
Just real briefly, this is such a great program. This is a big national grant, this is a evidence-based program. And I think everything we can do to help make this program even better than it already is, is wonderful. So thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you, that's nice, I appreciate that.
Good, anything further, yes, Ms. Wiltz?
I'll just echo that and add that I was a, one of the lucky participants. And I think it was a two-day training. It didn't seem like two days and I really appreciated the little fidgety items in the book. And so I'm all in on this, I think this is a great idea. The training was actually one of the best trainings I've ever attended content-wise too. So I'm, I'm a big fan, I'll just say that.
That's great, and thank you for that feedback. You know, we're, we're doing things in person, we all kind of knew what we were getting into. And then to have to change it to the virtual format, the presenters had to do some shifting around. And then again, as a participant, it, it can be a little taxing sometimes. So I'm glad, thank you for the feedback that it was such a positive experience and that the resource bag was a good plan, so thank you.
It was great.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? All right, is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve new account lines and Fund 9122- On the motion to approve new account lines and fund 9122-0000, Councillor Iverson?
Yes.
Councillor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Councillor Munson?
Yes.
Councillor Deckard?
Yes.
Councillor Hawke?
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for a category transfer in Fund 9122-0000 JDAI Coordination in the amount of $2,750.80 from the services category to the capital category.
Second.
All right. What can you tell us about this one, Ms. McPhee?
It really all is part of the same story. We had, again, funds that we had allocated for travel trainings, funds for food, for in-person events, and moving things from a 200 to a 300 requires counsel approval.
Got it. Thank you. Pretty straightforward. Any questions or comments from counsel? Is there any public comment? All right, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Councillor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councillor Munson?
Yes.
Councillor Hawke?
Yes.
Councillor Iverson?
Yes.
Councillor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Councillor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request to create new account lines and fund 9123-0000 JDAI Programming.
So something I failed to mention at the beginning, we get one.
I don't think we had a second.
I'm sorry.
Second, second, sorry.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I get so excited and.
No worries, yeah. Go right ahead.
So we are given one pot of money, but it's in two different buckets. So we have coordination funds, which was the 9122, and then we have programming funds, which is the 9123. So in coordination, we were allocated a total of $10,000. And then in the programming for the 2021 grant, we were awarded $49,139. Just as an additional piece of information, the state comes up with the formula of how much we are eligible for. So we didn't make that number up. The state came to us and said, this is the, of all the money we have available, this is how much you're eligible for. And we did apply for and were awarded the full amount. So in the programming, again, if you see where we're moving money for, you see we're adding for program supplies and promotional items, again, it's those virtual learning opportunities. The resource bag that you received, I think, if I remember correctly, some of them had like Monroe County JDAI on them. We bought pens before, something, you know, the last presenter did a lot about education, and we're really trying to get JDAI out into our community and for folks to become aware of it. And if they don't know about it, at least provide something that makes them a little curious about it. So again, this is just shifting money around that was previously awarded that we just don't think we're going to be able to spend, given the realities of what the circumstances are between now and June 30.
All right, thank you. Any discussion or questions from counsel? Any public comment? All right, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve new account lines and fund 9123-0000, Councillor Hawke?
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councillor Deckard?
Yes.
Councillor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Councillor Munson?
Yes.
Councillor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, it's a very friendly-looking cat you have there, Ms. Miller. Looked very supportive of the motion as well, too. So that's.
Waiting on that baby.
All right. I think we got one more item here for probation.
Mm-hmm. Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for a category transfer in Fund 9123-0000 JDAI Programming in the amount of $1,000 from the supplies category to the services category, and $430 from the services category to the supplies category, for a total transfer of $1,430.
Second.
All right. Anything to add on this one, Ms. McPhee?
Again, it's just a, we're recording, because it's a transferring from 200, which is food, to the 300s, we need counsel approval to be able to make those changes. The same argument as to why we were doing it in the other funds is the same thing. We had money allocated to things that we really thought we were going to be able to make work, and because we're still in the pandemic, in-person trainings and things like that are just very, very unlikely between now and the end of the year.
Got it.
I would also add that, as I said earlier, Department of Correction fully supported this. They are very eager for us to be creative and figure out ways to spend these grant dollars, because they don't want us sending them back. And I think Monroe County really has quite the reputation of being creative and innovative and spending down our grant dollars to the best of our ability. So again, it was, it was absolutely supported through the Department of Correction.
Excellent. Thank you. Any, anything from counsel, any questions? Do we have any public comment? And seeing none, we'll do a final roll call vote here for probation.
Councillor Hawke?
Yes.
Councillor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Councillor Iverson?
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councillor Munson?
Yes.
Councillor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too.
Okay, and up next will be boards and commissions and appointments, and we have one nomination for this evening to the Environmental Commission. And I'll let Ms. Wiltz make that motion.
Counsel, I move approval of the following citizen appointment to the Environmental Commission, Rachel Byer, for completion of a two-year term expiring February 1, 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I will also note for counsel that the Appointment Committee did meet with Ms. Byer. She's very impressive, and was delighted to nominate her for this appointment this evening. She received unanimous support from the Appointment Committee. Any questions or comments on the nomination? All right, is there any public comment on Ms. Byer's nomination and appointment? Seeing none, we will have a roll call vote, please.
Councillor Deckard?
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councillor Munson?
Yes.
Councillor Hawke?
Yes.
Councillor Iverson?
Yes.
Councillor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero to one.
Okay, and up next will be approval of minutes.
Counsel, I move to approve the summary minutes for the March 9, 2021 regular session as presented.
Second.
Second.
All right. Very. Any, any changes or modifications to the minutes that are, that we need to note? Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll see if there's any public comment on the minutes.
Yep.
See any public comment, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councillor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Councillor Munson?
Yes.
Councillor Hawke?
Yes.
Councillor Iverson?
Yes.
Councillor Deckard?
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, and that'll bring us to item nine, which is council comments. Do we have any council members who'd like to make closing remarks this evening? I saw Ms. Hawke's hand and Mr. Iverson, so we'll go in that order first.
Yes, I wanted to share with much sadness the news of the passing of my dear friend and longtime friend, the Honorable Judge Randy Bridges has passed. And of course, his, his dear wife Vivian also was with county government for years. I mean, she was like the mainstay of county operations. She did the payroll. She did the HR. She, she did accounting. She helped with everything having to do, making sure county government worked. So I send her much condolences. That couple was a dear, dear visitors here in my home for years, and I surely will miss their presence. But I'm, the arrangements are pending, so I, I don't know about that, whether or not Vivian will be back in town. But for those of you around county government and been around for years, you will remember Randy and Vivian. He always called her his bride.
Thank you, Ms. Hawke. Mr. Iverson?
Yes, so tonight Governor Holcomb announced that if you are 16 years of age or older, you'll be eligible to schedule your COVID-19 vaccination beginning March 31. That's wonderful, wonderful news. So we were upstaged a little bit by the governor tonight, but with that news, who cares? That's really good news. My second item is that is a little bit more sad, and I just wanted to remind those who are watching that we have had two mass shootings in our country in a very short amount of time. We are now looking at multiple people who have died at the hands of those using assault-style weapons. We are looking at people who are using inappropriate use of these, these guns. And I wanted to take the moment to briefly just speak the names of those who died, because I think it's important not only to speak the names, but also the ages, which I think is really stark and is important to hear. I'll do this quickly, and as I know that we're pressed for time, but I think it's important to do. Xiao Zui Tan, aged 49. Delania Yan, aged 33. Paul Andre Michaels, aged 54. De Yu Feng, aged 44. Young E Yu, aged 63. Hyun Jong Grant, aged 51. Sun Chung Park, aged 74. And Sun Cha Kim, aged 69. All those people perished in Atlanta. In Boulder, the victims are as follows. Denny Stone, aged 20. Nevin Stanisak, aged 23. Ricky Olds, aged 25. Chalona Barkawak, aged 49. Suzanne Fountain, aged 59. Terry Leicher, aged 51. Officer Eric Tally, aged 51. Kevin Mahoney, aged 61. Lynn Murray, age 62. And Jody Waters, age 65. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iverson. Any further comments from counsel? Mr. Deckard?
My gosh, the one time I'm muted. I want to thank both Councillor Hawke and Councillor Iverson for telling us about these losses that we've had, both here in the community more directly and nationwide, which we're all experiencing. I wanted to turn and talk for a moment about something that was extremely helpful that I had an experience with, and it was literally yesterday, I was helping some family members schedule vaccine, vaccination appointments, and I was going through 211 because it was a little bit more complicated than going through rshot.in.gov. And again, to schedule yours, rshot.in.gov, or you could Google Indiana coronavirus, I'm sure you'd find it, but just get on there or call 211. And I had about a 25-minute conversation with one of the most remarkable public servant 211 operators that I've ever talked to. And she was patient, and she was very intentional and very deliberate, and these are some of the many heroes that we have. Think about those folks dealing with all of us and all this, and who knows if, if they've even been vaccinated yet. And look, that, these are some, some great things that we can look to and turn to. And one of the big things that you, the public watching this or telling your family can do is to get that vaccine, to sign up for that vaccine, and to do your part in keeping us safe. We can get out of all of this if we keep that lending ear to each other, like that 211 operator who spent 25 minutes making two people whose lives she did not know, making them better. And there's a special place in heaven for those people that serve. So I just wanted to say that. Counsel, again, let me repeat that back, rshot.in.gov or 211. 211 is like 911, only it's 211, is one of my close friends always used to say. Thank you so much, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Deckard. Ms. Munson?
Just a short note to announce, since we're on the theme of Lake Monroe, that Monroe Dam Road, that is not the damn road, that is the damn road, is temporarily closed due to a rock slide. Nobody knows how long it'll be closed. Yeah.
Well, hopefully they'll get the damn road cleared.
Right.
Any, any other comments before we adjourn this evening? All right, well, thank you all, and we'll see you at our April regular session meeting. Have a good evening.